Welcome to the special council meeting Wednesday, March 29, 2023 at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located in the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Injihuabi, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Item number one, call to order in a moment of silence.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. Moved by Councilor Rick Owens, seconded by Councilor LaShaba. Be resolved the agenda for the special meeting of council regarding the 2023 budget held on Wednesday, March 29, 2023. Be approved as circulated and finally that sections 15, 32, and 58 of the Town of Kirkland Lake's procedural bylaw number 15075 as amended. Be suspended aid to allow for recess to hold public meeting prior to commencement of business noted in item six. Reports of municipal officers communications regarding the 2023 budget. B, allow for the new matter, item 6.1, 2022 annual summary reports to the Kirkland Lake drinking water system to be presented in keeping with the town's legislative requirements. And C, permit ask questions of clarification from council to administration in relation to item 6.2, 2023 budget presentations.
All in favor? Pounds? None noted, item very unanimous. Item number three, declaration of c coronary interest. None noted. Item number four, petitions and delegations, there are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations. Again, there are none this evening. So we're now going to take a recess to begin of the special meeting to begin the public meeting regarding budget 2023. Okay. So moving on. So we'll call to order. I hereby call this public meeting of Wednesday, March 29, 2023 to order. Item number two, declaration of the c coronary interest. None noted. Item number three, 3.1, 2023 budget, public meeting, Jennifer Montroy, Municipal.
Council expressed, sorry, I didn't mean Madam Mayor and all of council. Council expressed an interest in hosting a public meeting this evening to provide an added forum for public input surrounding the 2023 budget. Members of the public were provided with the option of registering in advance of the meeting to be equipped in priority to speak this evening, submit their comments in writing to the clerk's office to be read at this meeting, or participate in person or electronically at this meeting. Subsequently, members of the public were provided with the opportunity to participate in budget survey, which is included in this year's table budget package. Later on this evening, council will be receiving presentations from Town Kirkland Lake Administration, providing a general departmental overview, rationale for increases and anomalies, challenges, and upcoming initiatives. Council will then have an opportunity to review the table of budget, these are being public consultation, and ask questions of clarification prior to the deliberation meeting on April 11. The treasurer will present those questions in a public forum prior to the commencement of council's deliberation for transparency purposes. Therefore, to summarize the steps in this evening's meeting, comments received in writing by the clerk's office, if any, will be read first. Each participant will have three minutes to provide their comments. Each participant can only speak once. Persons who have registered and or are joining electronically, if any, will be called to the podium or given the floor digitally in order of priority. The finance chair, which is tonight, will be the mayor, will then call for anyone in council chambers to present their comments. Participants will be encouraged to leave their email address or contact information with the deputy clerk who's sitting to my left. If they have asked a question for the treasurer, once spoken, nothing prevents a participant to submit subsequent questions to the treasurer thereafter, either by email, telephone, or by attending the municipal office during regular business hours. If the participant is joining electronically, they will be encouraged to email myself at clerk@ptl.ca to ensure their questions are, their question or questions are redirected to the treasurer. The treasurer will be responding to participants directly, and then all responses to the inquiries from members of the public and council will be presented in the open meeting of council on April 11, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number four. Madam Clerk, again, was, how was notice given?
Notice of the public meeting was given in accordance with the Town of Kirkland Lake's notice by law 2247, by publishing the said notice on the town's website 14 days in advance since February 21, 2023. Supplemental notice was published again on March 18, 2023, coordinated with the February 24, 2023 edition of the municipal update through the town's various social media streams and within daily local radio broadcast. Broadcast screens, sorry.
Thank you. Item number five, correspondence received. Madam Clerk, was there any correspondence received from members of the public surrounding the 2023 budget?
Madam Chair, I confirm that no correspondence was received by the office of the clerk.
Thank you. Item number six. Before I ask the clerk my next question, I would like to remind all members that this is a public meeting and there is no back and forth discussion with members of the public. Madam Clerk, has anyone registered to provide comments or post questions in person or electronically?
Madam Chair, confirm that no one has reached the office of the clerk to register or to request to participate electronically in this public meeting.
Okay, I will now invite members of the public to line up in the center aisle. You will each have, you will each have three minutes to provide your comments or pose your question. You may all speak once this evening, and please state your name and address.
Afternoon. My name is Danny Serochin, I live at 93 Fourth Street, Kirkland Lake. Lloyd, thank you for the great document. Very easy to follow. I have a couple of questions concerning the contracted services. In this little presentation, I have no questions about Works Department, Tech Pioneer, Aqua, Reserves, or the ways to landfill. Those are, services are pretty straightforward. The first question. Contracted service at the cemetery for $7,500. Second question would be $19,800 for contracted service at the library. Fourth would be the museum for $15,780. Complex, $82,049. Administration, Works Office, $83,000 for a contracted service. The only one here that really throws me for a loop is the human resources went down from $29,907 to $1,500. Thank you. IT systems, $163,000. Treasury, $59,400. Another one that's really different. Health and safety, 22 budget was $691. Now it's at $11,500. Really one that questionable to me, the airport, $9,000. I kind of understand from Lloyd's presentation, from what happened last week, building is now at $137,500. Economic development, $191,250. Planning, $196,500. Stefan has kind of gone into that because of the plans to do with your your budget for the next 10 years. And the last one that really gets me going is the fire department for $60,090. For a grand total of $1,205,379. My other question is, for the last one, the fire department budget and wages for the year, for next year, $300,000 increase. There's only 10 boys there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your valued input, council. There is no further members of the public that wish to speak this evening. So, item number seven, consideration of proposed bylaws. There are none. Madam Clerk, please read the directions stemming from this public meeting.
Madam Chair, through you, the council received the comments, questions from members of the public surrounding the 2023 budget, and that the treasurer provide responses directly to those individuals and fire the council deliberations during the special council meeting scheduled on Tuesday, April 11, 2023.
Thank you. This is the recommendation, moving forward, we'll go for adjournment. So this concludes the public meeting. Thank you everyone for attending. And you will receive further information. Okay, so now we will resume the recess from the public meeting back to the special meeting. Nothing to do. Item number six, reports of municipal officers in communications. 6.1, 2022 annual summary report of the Kirkland Lake drinking water system. Brian? Yes, sir, you can manage our operations and environmental services. Will you be presenting this report?
I can. I was going to be actually presenting the two PowerPoints. I wasn't aware of that one, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah. Yes, Brian, you'd be presenting those two tonight, and also the the annual summary report for the Kirkland Lake drinking water system. But I can just briefly just mention doing the work. This is something that is done on an annual basis, and is just the legislative requirement that this be assigned.
Any actual report?
Yes.
So just for people that are unaware, we had the full presentation.
That was for the operational.
Oh, for the operational thing, for the annual summary, okay. Okay. Okay, so any questions from council? None noted?
Recommendation?
Yeah.
Moved by Councilor Jason Owens, seconded by Councilor Rick Owens. Be resolved that report number 2023 PW5 entitled 2022 annual summary report for the Kirkland Lake drinking water system be received, and that the council for the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby accept the 2022 annual summary report for the Kirkland Lake drinking water system as presented, and finally that the 2022 annual summary report for the Kirkland Lake drinking water system be published on the town's official website, and a copy be made available for public viewing on the public works office on Dunfield Road.
Clerk, are all in favor? opposed, none noted, item very unanimous. Item 6.2, 2023 budget presentation, Alan Smith, Chief Administrative Officer.
I'd be invited, Mayor, to members of the council. So first of all, what we do, we'll have presentations from all departments. And we'll start things off with our treasurer, who will address questions that from members of council who pop up. Thank you.
So we have one submitted question directed to the budget, and it was related to the the reserve transfers, totaling approximately 2.5 million. So if you, if you look through your budget documents, a capital budget is taking up approximately approximately 1.7 million of those transfers, and there's, you know, a line in the capital budget, there's a line which projects are associated with, with the reserve transfers. And for the most part, you can even tell which reserves they're coming out of, reserve, reserve funds. The balance, the other 720,000 of reserves, transfers are coming out of our working capital. I don't have a specific breakdown by department, but they are in the budget themselves. Each of the budgets have their own particular breakdowns, so you can see, if you look at any particular budget, if there's a transfer from reserves into that budget, the number is there. Just to kind of give you a general answer, typically what we're trying to do with the reserves when it comes to operating is we're trying to cover off those one-time or those odd expenditures that aren't part of our normal operations. So, you know, a couple of directors actually speak to this a little bit later, I believe, about their circumstances and why we're using reserves in their particular circumstances. So, you know, that's kind of a summary, like we're trying to pull out the things that you wouldn't see from year to year in a normal operating budget, and what we're not expecting to repeat, or if it's going to repeat, it's certainly not in the near term. So that's kind of like the theory underlying why you'll see it on any particular department. The specifics of each department, you know, directors will probably talk to most of those specific transfer. Any questions? Okay, so I guess now we get into the meat here. If, I'm very open to questions. My understanding is we will provide formal answers for the deliberation meeting. I might comment or try and offer up some answers tonight as well, to at least kind of keep process moving.
Oh, and Councilor Owens?
On page three, Madam Mayor, on page 15 of attachment one, the last line, tax levy. I didn't notice it right off the bat, but there's, he had budgeted $11 million. That's a deficit.
Yeah, but essentially, our operations run a deficit every year and use tax.
Okay.
We use our tax levy to pay for them.
Okay, so it's 11 million, but the actual is almost $6 million more than what's, why is there such a big difference in number? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I'm working off the agenda. Give me a second to catch up to you. Yes, the short answer is you'll see under the, a couple of lines up above, under other taxation, the material municipal partnership fund and other, they're not in 2022, there should be numbers there.
Okay.
So the number last year was 10. It was, it was just over around $11 million that fell through the bottom, I can, yeah, I have to go to the last year's budget, I actually find the exact number. But certainly, that's not one I could do off, I'll hit with that exact numbers, but
It's just, it looks wrong, there's
Yeah, it's a mistake in the presentation.
So this would be a mistake here.
The 17 million?
Yeah.
A mistake, 11 million is correct.
Okay, so that's
17 million should be approximately 11 million.
Lot, yes.
I'll put the exact number. Thank you.
Anything further from council? Okay, we proceed. So, yeah. Hey, Cheryl, I'll have you come up to present for Accentennial Litering. Are we doing it? You can sit down if you're comfortable.
Okay. Oh, okay, so the operating revenues we have. They're kind of like, you don't know, right, what you're going to get, so it's a forecast. But our grants are at $34,422.
Sorry, Cheryl, can you speak up?
Oh, we're not going to catch on that.
Oh. Okay, do you want me to just do like full? Or go line by line?
Just for this year, since some of us are new, if you wouldn't mind just kind of briefly, quickly going line by line, we would certainly appreciate.
So, user fees, I budgeted about $5,450. So that, that includes our printing fees, services that we offer, like faxing, laminating. But, no, fines and other revenue, so yeah, probably like internet fees and such, and then our grants, there are operating grants that we see from the ministry, and I'm hoping to get student funding this year. Donations, I've budgeted $9,370 dollars for the year. Recoveries, that's just, I don't even know where that comes from, but it's always added. Other revenue will be fines that we generate, probably some, I don't know why, so, oh, are probably our miss ball funding that are miss ball, that we get the interest from the from the trust fund. And then our total revenue will be $61,302. And then for expenditures, we have labor and related, so there is an increase in there because of pay equity. I'm assuming benefits, I did a small increase, 3% increase for benefits, and then we have a vacation. People have, some staff members are now receiving more percent, instead of 6, it was being 8%. So that, that justifies that, as well as some, some staff members are now getting more hours. Materials and supplies, so that will include our books that we purchase. Craft supplies that we, we purchase, paper, our photocopier. Just general material that we need to, to, that we need for the members of the library. Utilities, of course, there's an increase in there when everything has gone up. Administration and other. So that's at $11,197. Not quite sure what that entails, I don't know, the way that everything's bundled up, I'm not quite sure how it goes. Our contracted services, so that entails our custodian. It also has our snow removal or snow plowing, our library operating system that we use, and our alarm system. So that's where that comes into play. The custodian did not receive any pay increase, and so I'm assuming I only get $17,400, I don't know why it's $19,800. Interest, that's for bank, from the bank accounts, $9, $90 for that. So the total is, the total expenses is $401,265.
Excellent. Councilor Owens?
Yes, sir, you, your worship. I'm looking at materials and supplies. In 2022, you budgeted $40,000, but your actual was $60,000. And then in 2023, you're budgeting $43,000, I'm just wondering like the 60 seems to be an outlier, why, why that's so high?
Because we purchased extra material last year that we, we used money from our small cookie funds, from the 2021 small cookie funds to purchase extra books, extra craft supplies. We did a grade injection for our summer reading program for purposes. We, we did a lot of purchasing for just a lot of children's, I can't go like board games and books, and yeah, so we really spent a lot of
Okay, so the 43 then is back to normal spending.
Correct, yeah.
I suppose was
You will see on the revenue side under donations, a big increase last year as well.
Yeah.
You speaks directly to that.
Yeah.
They're related.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the $43,000 was a realistic figure, and you wouldn't be coming back to us and saying, oh my gosh.
Councilor Owens?
The donations when they come in, how are they distributed? Does it go like to pay wages, or does it go to pay materials and stuff, programming?
It depends what the donation is for. So sometimes we'll get somebody who wants to donate, you know, $200 towards large print material, so it'll go into a donation somehow called acquisition. If somebody wants to donate for children's programming, it will go under children's programming line, and that's what the funds are used for. If it's just a general donation to the library, it just kind of goes into our, like the general account, and then at the end of the year, sometimes depending on if we're over or under, like if we're under budget, then that money will just go into, into our
Yeah, so as you stated, if, if the donations are stipulated, so they say, we want you to spend it on this, and it's not spent in the year, it goes into deferred revenue for the next year to be spent as as stipulated. General donations just end up being a normal revenue line. They end up in the bank account, but they just become part of the normal type of operations.
So we have, I think there's, we have one for genealogy, because we get donations that specifically go towards upgrading our genealogy section. We have a donation account for children, one for acquisitions. One and one now for the children's department refresh project.
Any further questions? Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, okay, sorry, Councilor Dykens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Cheryl.
Cheryl. I'm just wondering the background to the transfer that the library received of $10,097. Is that from the reserve, or just?
Yeah, that's, that's the mechanism we just talked about. So, any donations from the previous year that have expenditures happening in 2022, it would be coming back from those deferred revenues or those reserve accounts to help pay for the costs. Yeah, it's very similar to the rest of the, you know, it's either coming out of reserve or deferred revenue, and it's just a carryover from, usually it's the previous year, it could be a couple of years depending on which project it was and stuff like that. I don't know exactly which projects are, but, but that's what it is.
Madam Mayor, so this is deferred revenue from the previous year?
Or reserves, depending on, on what, so for your purposes and for the town, you could have money in deferred revenue, which is stipulated donations, or you could have monies that were set aside in the past for specific purposes, which are reserves and reserve funds. So the two essentially behave the same way, they, they let you defer a revenue stream or an expenditure stream till it actually happens in all in years. So this one appears to be reserves, I, we have to, if you want more details, I'll have to come back on that, what projects it is.
Yes, Councilor Shaba? Councilor Shaba? Oh, Councilor Shaba, you're muted?
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, through you, Madam Mayor, to Cheryl, the director. This donation of 72,506, very, very impressive amount. So my questions to you, my question to you, I only have one question, is that do you solicit, did you solicit for this donation? Do you go out there, are there set of people that are giving you money all the time, or they're just it comes and goes? I know some of us maybe subscribe to TV or whatnot, but do you have this people, group of people that are donating money to the library all the time, or, I mean, because that's a lot of money, yeah, and then I see you're budgeting for something like $9,370, so can you speak to that?
No, I, we don't, we don't have people
No, I we don't, we don't have people that are, you know, sending us money all the time.
Okay.
We we do, when it comes to our TV summer reading program though, we do send letters to local businesses. And and seek donations so that we can purchase prizes and um. You know, have entertainers uh attend the library and 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 stuff, and we've been very fortunate. Um actually, I think your company donates to the library every year, so um. Yeah, so I don't anticipate, I I it's hard to anticipate what you're gonna get, um last year we did receive uh several donations. Uh one, a five thousand dollar donation that was to go towards genealogy. Um we did receive uh a ten thousand dollar donation, like so it 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 just varies, I can't. It it's, it'll it'll probably be different definitely this year, so.
Um uh follow up question, madam mayor, uh can you not maybe uh uh raise the bar? Uh uh and then maybe challenge our community members uh and see what happens, I I I know. Ninety three seventy is uh compared to seventy two thousand five or six, that's uh that's low, I mean.
But it was an extraordinary year uh last year, um. You know, we we received um quite a bit of donations towards our um. Children's renovation program, so that money is earmarked for, you know, for that project alone. And and again, it like I said, it won't happen this year or or it may, you never know, but um. Yeah.
Smile cookies were also.
Oh, yeah, the smile cookie money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um Cheryl, you can continue with your presentation.
Um so some of our challenges or the rationale for the increases, if you want to know, um. One of them is the our library staff, which has received, you know, equity, pay equity adjustments. Um utilities and and uh increase to benefits, I also have library material increase. Um the library has not seen an increase in our book account for over twenty years. And um we are fortunate that we do get the trust money from the miss ball account, and that's like nine thousand dollars. But the cost of keeping the library, you know, up to date, so you we're looking at. Um you know, e-resource materials, um. Online books and uh you you know, audio books from uh books from overdrive. Um so you, we we're trying to keep up to date and uh so that's where some of that. That's why I'm trying to justify the increase of two thousand dollars into the book. Um some of our challenges, uh staffing is is quite a challenge, I find. Um trying to retain the current staff, um it 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 can become difficult at times because. Uh we only offer part-time employment, uh whenever we had a full-time member leave the library. Um that position was removed and uh it was replaced with part-time staff. So it's kind of hard to offer, you know, incentives to keep them when, you know, other places might. Offer something better, so um you know, you you spend the money into training and um. And 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 keep you trying to keep your your staff happy, but um yeah, sometimes it's just a matter of. You know, if we could offer benefits to staff or more hours to staff, um that that might entice them to stay. Um professional development is another issue, uh challenge, uh you know, you'd like to send your staff to for training or to conferences and um. You don't have the staff, you can send them, but then you don't have the staff to to work at the library, so it it, you know, it's a double edged sword. You know, and maintaining the level of service that we currently offer, that's also difficult when you're lacking in staffing. Um so we want to develop new programs and uh we also. So it's been a goal of ours for quite a few years is to offer out programming outside of the library, you know, we like to teach in schools. Um and and do visit schools and daycares and and you know, to get out to maybe maybe the market every Tuesday or, you know, do a storytime in the park. Um but it gets difficult because, you know, you can plan something and then if someone calls in sick, then you have to cancel it, so. It it would be nice to have, you know, someone full-time at the library all day and then you have the part-time staff to to work around that, but. That is what it is. Um initiatives, uh well, of course, one of our biggest initiatives is our uh. For twenty twenty three will be our children's department refresh project, um. You know, we we received a lot of funding, you know, thanks to to Bonnie Mary, and like they're they're working hard on grants and stuff, so. Um yeah, and then we we can see that even starting this year would would be nice, um. We also need to, we're going to refresh our genealogy room, right now it's in with our meeting room, so that's gonna have a whole room. On its own, which which is great, um our board needs to start working on a new strategic plan. Um we would like to create an outdoor and garden space, in the past, we did have um children attend at our garden club. And you know, we'd like to bring that back, we had to stop it due to COVID, so we'd like to bring that back, we did receive. So five thousand dollar funding from uh from an an initiative I I for that back in. Two thousand nineteen, we did purchase um some benches and some pavers and uh. You know, garden plots, and so we really like to, we have a s- uh our. A yard on the side of the library, so we really want to try and make that a nice welcoming space for for um. Just our community, um I'd like to create a seed library, a lot of people have been asking about that, so that that is a goal that I'd like to start. And we want to create a things library, so we, in the things library, we offer park passes, um we have kilowatt hours where you can. You know, plug it in and see how much, you know, how much electricity you're using, um we have our green screen, but in included in that, I'd also like to have. Um you know, small pool kits or uh you know, you can come in and borrow a drill or you know, a weed whacker or. You know, just kind of things like that to just to help with um help people with, you know, you don't have to go out and purchase it, you can come and borrow it. So those are some of our initiatives.
Perfect, thank you for your presentation, anything further from council members? It appears not, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And so next up is community services. So that is Miss Bonnie Saffreider, cemetery, childcare, museum, parks and recreation, thank you very much. Thank you, madam mayor. A second here. All right.
So what I thought I would do is um go through the presentation um in the areas. That the the divisions that we have within community services, and if you'd let me stop after each division, I can for questions on that one, or I can go to the end and then. So the the numbers that you see on your presentation, the ones that have brackets around them, those actually show that revenues exceed expenditures in those areas. So both in cemetery and childcare for twenty twenty three, we are uh expecting that our revenues will exceed our expenditures. For museum and parks and rec, and you've already heard from library, um that's not the case, so definitely the expenditures exceed the revenues. So there is definitely a a budget increase, and as I go through each division, I'll explain some of the reasons why you see some increases in those areas. I can also certainly address the um questions from the member of the public in terms of contracted services in each of those divisions as we get there. So, starting with cemetery. So we have seen, we are predicting a decrease in operations of the cemetery in twenty twenty three compared to twenty twenty two. And that's basically because our revenues sadly, probably, are increasing. So when we are doing our budget figures for twenty twenty three, we are predicting revenues based on the twenty twenty two numbers, there's no guarantee. But that's our our best method of determining in terms of the cemetery, unless there's some wide variance that we don't suspect. So if revenues continue along the same lines in twenty twenty three as they had in twenty twenty two, we are. We believe that we will see a a surplus in the cemetery area. Go ahead. You don't have a lot of challenges at the cemetery, but one of them is the availability of post-secondary students. I am pleased to say, though, however, in the last couple of days, we've seen more applications come in, a couple of, about a week ago, I was very worried. Um in community services, we do employ seven summer students in various areas, and we did not even have. Half of those applications, and so now the numbers are increasing, I'm feeling a little bit better about that. Upcoming initiatives. So the last few years, we've spent some time and some money on beautification of the ground, so we're looking at the shrubs and the trees and the. Floral displays that we have and the ones that are getting a little bit weather, we are replacing them as we go. We are creating a new cremation garden area because the current one that we have is. Full, um we're adding an outdoor kiosk to allow visitors to locate loved ones, so this will basically be. A large screen on the side of the building that you can come after hours and you could put in the name of the person that you're looking for. And will tell you what plot they are in the cemetery, so that's our greatest um demand. Is that after hours and on weekends, people can't find their loved ones, so this is a fairly inexpensive venture that we'll be able to do. And uh it'll come inside in the winter, it'll stay outside in the summer months. Aeration addition of soil in the new area, section sixteen, so as we create a new area based on demand, it is sand. So we have to create a a nice environment, so we absolutely have to add some um earth and some grass seed. And we are going to move the water lines back this year, so the water lines are very close to the roadways, and what we're what we find happen is. The roadways are fairly narrow, it is one-way, um but we have a lot of cars that do hit the the little pillar that holds the the water that you can water your flowers with. So we're going to move them all back a few feet to restrict that. And in terms of contracted services, that was one of the questions that we had um for the cemetery, the main contract service is niche inscriptions. So we hire a company on an annual basis to do all of the inscriptions for the niches in the column area, and that's the actual cost. Yeah, I'll stop there for cemetery.
So councillor Owen.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the numbers here. Uh under user fees. Twenty twenty two, you know, budgeted one thirty seven, the actuals were forty seven thousand and change. And then in twenty twenty three, you're budgeting a hundred and sixty five thousand, almost a hundred and sixty six thousand. Um when your actuals from twenty twenty two is only forty seven, do you know something I don't know?
I mentioned this, I think at the last budget meeting in general, but the uh cemetery has a different. Uh slightly different accounting system, it's a trust relationship because of the uh. Breathe and authority requires a certain type of accounting, and the truth is, I just haven't finished it yet, so those revenues are incomplete. It's really, the uh the budgeted revenues are actually, I was looking at this two hours ago. So the budgeted revenues are actually fairly close, but what the actuals are, they're just not in our records yet.
Not here yet, okay, um if I can make any new management. And then we go down to recoveries, which I have no idea what that is, I hate to think of it, but um. It may be the same answer again, you go from three.
Yes.
Thirty two hundred to ten thousand, same same answer?
Yep.
Okay, and then uh I just curious as to what the long-term uh interest. Interest and long-term payments are for the cemetery.
That's our repayment on the column area.
Okay.
So when the column area is built, it's it, we have to do the repayment on an annual basis.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you very much.
Councillor Dykens, uh through madam mayor, uh to director secretary, um just a general question, I know we have one cemetery. Um is there a projection when we were running both of the?
We we don't have a projection, um it the one area that you will see us coming to council in the next. Probably two years will be for a new column area, but we do have a care and maintenance fund that for on every sale, money goes into that. So it's not like we're asking for more money, we're just, it's it's a transfer funds really, and so the columnarium, we will exceed capacity probably within two years. In terms of grounds, we have a fair amount of ground available that goes further back from what the the you can see.
Thank you, thank you. Anything further from council members via Zoom?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Shaba, you may proceed.
Okay, yeah, through you, uh uh madam mayor, I uh, this uh line item. Under expenditures said rents and finance, uh it's a new one. Uh there's nothing there for two thousand twenty two budgeted or actuals, so can you explain what that's all about, please? So thirty four hundred dollars.
So one of our line items is called rental slash equipment, and this is actually a piece of equipment that we're going to purchase, is the purchase of an aerator. That we can use throughout the cemetery, so the three thousand four hundred, it's a it's not, it doesn't hit a capital threshold, it is a. An operating item, we probably could have put it in a supplies account as well, and it would have come up in the supply, so. The thirty four hundred is totally dedicated to an aerator.
Thank you.
Thank you, anything further from council on cemetery? Nothing noted, you may proceed.
Thank you. To you, madam mayor, to council, for childcare, it's fairly straightforward, I only have one slide on it, basically, we own the building, we insure the building. And we have um another group that rents from us and they operate the childcare, so they pay rent on a on a monthly basis. And we do. Every year, um we budget a surplus, that surplus then goes into a reserve, so for the year that we're gonna have a roof repair or window repair or something like that, we should have. Hopefully enough money in the kitty that we don't have to then ask for additional capital dollars. So in the past, the town of Kirkland Lake did operate a childcare facility in this building. And if there was a cost to the taxpayer, it probably came in around eighty thousand dollars for the year, the last time we operated. And we approached another childcare operator in Kirkland Lake, who was funded through D-SAP and user fees and asked them if they were interested in expanding. And they now do two sites in Kirkland Lake, they have one site at Northern College, one site at Queen Street, but one operation. So there are definitely cost savings to be had when you have one operation in two locations, so they can save on their directors' wages, their kitchen staff, things like that.
Excellent, any questions from council?
Well, councillor Dykens, uh through madam mayor, the director secretary, um you said we own the building, but yeah, like. I don't understand, like, it's uh you need a one on second or or.
No, it's called Second Street Daycare, it's confusing, but this is on Queen Street, so the daycare on Queen Street, we own the building and a auxiliary building. Perfect, thank you.
Anything further from council, does not appear so, you may proceed.
Thank you, moving on to museum. So for museum, there are some increases, and from the museum supervisor, these are the reasons attributed to the increases. So a bit of an increase in supplies and operations, the main two items are replace the hot water tank, that already has been done, that was um. It was a a critical item to replace at the beginning of twenty twenty three, and to purchase, and these are not, they don't hit a uh. A capital threshold, these are all a few thousand dollars, um and to purchase uh. An AED machine for the museum, they do not have one there. In twenty twenty through twenty twenty two, the museum did receive various one-time COVID funding, so you will see the revenues were greater in. Previous years because of the COVID funding, so for twenty twenty three, there is no COVID funding available to museums. And they had some increases in labor costs, as you will see with most of the departments. Challenges, and I don't want this to sound like a negative, because it's not a negative challenge, it's a good challenge, the challenge is always for the museum staff to determine. What types of programming can be offered to the residents in Kirkland Lake and the surrounding area to get people in the door and enjoy the culture. Upcoming initiatives. The museum will host a traveling exhibit, in fact, that's coming up very soon, that will be their next exhibit in their gallery. They are continually brainstorming and talking to different members of the community to see what can be offered in terms of classes, workshops, events and activities. And as promised in um previous months, um we will be bringing to council a business case for service delivery options. For additional ways to operate the museum that perhaps could satisfy more demand in the town of Kirkland. And for contracted services at museum, give me a second. Police, co-hunt, Abell, sure, okay, so I should. Police, co-hut, Abell, sure, okay, so I should say what they are. Sorry about that. We've got the alarm system, we've got pest control, we've got the hood over the, the oven, the oven hood. We have TSSA for the elevator. We have reliable for the dishwasher. And also in that area, the instructors that offer programs, they're paid out of that contracted services. Any questions on museum?
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, I'm just looking here and I, I think the answer is COVID, but in the grants category, seventy-eight down to forty, is that because of COVID funding grants that you received?
Yes, so it, yeah, those are the one timers.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Now, materials and supplies, you're, you're dropping eleven thousand dollars. Is that because of the hot water tank and?
No, it's because when we had some of the COVID funding, we were able to buy more things with that COVID funding. So it is almost a transfer in and out.
Okay, and one final question, so may I worship? Administration and other, I, I like this change. We're going from thirty-seven down to thirty-two. Can you just explain how we're cutting down there?
Nope.
No?
No, no, no. Off the top of my head, I can't. If you give me a second.
When I see reduction in administration, I'm always happy.
I just take a peek and see what some of those accounts are. I don't want museum off the top of my head.
I can't speak to the specific part of it, but there's less budgeted for travel and training and there's less budgeted for advertising.
Okay.
Thank you. One of the ones for advertising that I can pick up on were the billboard signs.
Yeah.
So the billboard signs on the highways, they, they're now paid for. There is still a monthly MTO fee, but we don't have to pay to have the billboards.
And just a word to that, I was driving back from Toronto yesterday, last night. And yes, I saw museum and northern history signs.
Yes.
So they are working.
Anything further from council? Nope, none noted. So you may proceed.
Thank you. Moving on to parks and recreation. So the main increases that you'll see for twenty twenty-three are labor costs. So the first one, as you're probably going to see in most of the departments, that's pretty standardized. Another one to keep in mind is in twenty twenty-two, we did have the month of January where we closed. When we were closed, our expenditures were definitely lower. We laid off anyone who was part-time. We didn't have custodial. We didn't have chemical use. So our expenditures in twenty twenty-two were less than what we're predicting for twenty twenty-three because we'll be twelve full months rather than eleven. And thing, a good news story, things like it increases in attendance, the more people that walk through the door means that we have to staff more. So if it's things like pool, more people mean more lifeguards. So the number that I wanted to share was we had over five thousand visits during the nine days of the red break, which is huge. That's a lot of, a lot of foot traffic in the front door. Another reason that we aren't able to offset is that our proposed user fees that are still coming to council, they won't be coming into effect until June first. So we try to offset the increases in labor costs with increases in user fees so that we don't see such a discrepancy, but those user fees won't be passed until after the fifth month of the year. We've seen substantial increase in costs in a couple of key areas. So the chemicals for the pool, we've seen almost a hundred percent increase in costs. Cleaning supplies, very high increase in costs as well as use. So this is really interesting. If you look at things like paper towel use, we, we buy by the case. We used to buy a case of paper towels a month. We now buy a case of paper towels a week. And that is primarily people cleaning themselves, say in the gym, not cleaning themselves, cleaning up after themselves in the gym. People are really, really used to, I use a piece of equipment, I grab my paper towel, I squirt and I clean. We're, we love it, but there's a cost associated with that. So that's kind of the hangover from COVID. And fuel, we've seen a big increase in fuel. Substantial increase in cost of supplies for parks. The areas we're seeing huge increases in parks are soil, fertilizer and grass seed. So for homeowners as well. So I'd break it to you, when you're trying to buy those things for your homes this summer, you're going to, you see a substantial increase. And we also have included the Kirkland Lake's portion of the community safety wellbeing plan in the parks and recreation budget. And that's just under twenty thousand dollars. So that does make up a fairly large percentage of the change in the increase.
Councilor Dykens, to you, Madam, to Director Sackr. I'm just wondering, under donations, four thousand was budgeted in for twenty twenty-two and it's almost six thousand and there's none. I know you don't know, like, who's going to donate, but is, is there a, a trend or?
This is very specific. This was for the loose parts playground. So the loose parts playground is an initiative that the money flows through the parks and recreation department. So they had a couple of large donations. They have the big fundraiser at Grant Home Hardware, things like that. So that's why the twenty twenty-two number was very high. We also have this, some grants for civic that also went into that. So for twenty twenty-two. So we are, we don't predict things like donations to the loose part, loose parts park, that's a tough one. But it will be in, in and out supposedly. So that park should be opening this year. So that should balance a bit there.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, I'll ask this one from Mr. Shiroshin. Under contracted services, actual for twenty twenty-two was thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Budget for twenty twenty-three is eighty-two thousand and forty-nine?
So the, the twenty thousand dollars for community safety wellbeing plan falls in there. So that's a big portion of the change. Some of the other areas that fall in there are TSSA. Their costs have gone up a lot. TSSA provides us with inspections for the elevator, for the water slide and the ice plant. Their rates have gone up substantially. And the other one that we have increased a lot, but you'll see an increase in revenue along with it. Our fitness instructors are paid out of contracted services. They're contract based. But you will see that the, we've seen the same number, the same amount that the expenses increased, so has the revenue.
Okay, and if I may worship, continue on this. The interest in long-term payments, is that the swimming pool payments?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and one question that I'm really happy to ask. It's in the revenues under grants. Actual for twenty twenty-two is seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And budgeted for twenty twenty-three is forty-nine thousand. Can you elaborate a little? I like, I like that budget.
These are fingers crossed because we have not received confirmation yet, but we have received encouragement from some of our funding agencies that that will all feed for student funding. So to fund our student positions in both parks as well as in programming. So it not confirmed, but we put it in when we feel somewhat confident that we will get it.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Shaba?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the director, I get my question got answered. I was, the question was about the interest and LTD payments. I understand the LTD payment part, but there's the interest. You just answered that, Director. I'm okay.
Okay, you may proceed. Thank you. You can go to the next slide.
So some of our challenges from staffing, you've probably seen on the media that we're doing a fairly big media promotion on aquatic staff. Aquatics is tough for us because we get people trained by the age of about sixteen and quite often they leave the community at eighteen. So it's a constant go around. So we're really trying to encourage young adults, medium adults, older adults to, to get trained as well. So we're trying to compact all of our training into shorter periods of time. And, and really all we say is if you can swim, we want you. And we're going to hope to get them to that level of getting on the pool deck one day. Summer students, as I said, looking a little bit more promising. Another challenge we have is with sick time and isolation. So with, with isolation still recommended when you aren't feeling well, that means we see more staff staying home. Some of our positions, we don't have to backfill. A lot of our positions we do. So if it's a, an arena operator, if it's a custodian, if it's a front desk attendant, if it's a aquatic staff, we pay them to stay home and we have to backfill for somewhere to come in and it's typically backfilling at an OT cost. So that's a bit of a challenge still for us. Increase in cost of supply, the supply chain delays. We, we're finding that some of, some of the areas where we would expect four to eight week delivery, sometimes even up to ten week delivery, we're, we're honestly being told it's forty week delivery. So it's a huge change for us to wrap our head around. Go ahead. Upcoming initiatives, we, we always do programming. Some of the things we're looking at a little bit differently. Offering some changes, our advanced courses, fitness classes and show them the programming. We're spending a great deal of time completing our funded projects through Fednor, Ontario Trail Foundation and ISAP. So that's the investing in Canada program that was a COVID stream. So that's basically the header and chiller project. It is the upgrades to the arena and it is the upgrade to the civic park, those three funding. Managing the library refreshes is actually quite, quite a joy, actually. And continuing to offer affordable access. So in recreation, we always try to balance fee for service and affordable access. So we try to make sure there's enough free outside opportunities as well as fee for service. And we're always looking for funding opportunities. And we already talked about contracted services for recreation. Any further questions from council?
Councilor Kylie?
Uh, yeah, just a comment, Bonnie. Part of our staffing cost, I assume, include staffing for long weekends at these, for the pool. We, like Family Day, place was totally swamped with people. So I, I hope we've included some monies in that area to cover those days. Because when children are home on a long weekend and whatnot, it's a, it's a very special place to go. I know my kids come up from Timmins and that's the first place they had to. So it's nice to see that we are opening, hopefully on a regular basis.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor, to Councilor Kylie. I can speak a little bit more to that. You're absolutely right. There was a report that was brought to council probably two or three years ago now about opening on statutory holidays. And we've kind of hit a couple of them as the last three years have gone by. We feel that we get better attendance in the winter months. In the summer months, people tend to want to be outside. Family Day, for example, was very busy. It was very, very, very busy. We are keeping stats on all of the statutory holidays that we are open to make sure that financially it isn't too much of a hit. Family Day was not at all. We, we were in the black after we paid all of our, it's all, it's all overtime day on the stats. So it's time plus time and a half. And even after that, we were still in the black. The other days that we've tried, we haven't been. We've been a little bit in the red, but we're still providing the service. So we're just trying to balance it and we won't be open all of the stats of the year. It's not logical. But the stats that we can find staff, that's the other challenge. We have to sometimes twist a little bit of ours. And if, if people will work, then we will be with them.
I think that's a good approach, Bonnie, and I know the priest, the people of Kirkland Lake certainly appreciated the pool being open on Family Day, for example.
Certainly, yeah.
Anything further from council? Okay, thank you. Thank you. So the next presentation will be corporate services, CAO, clerk, mayor, council, IT, human resources and health and safety, treasury and policing. So break delight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the council. So yeah, corporate services. I'm moving over the, the numbers first of all. We do have a nine percent increase to our budget. Admin, CEO, clerk's office, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one ninety. Human resources, two thirty, eight twenty-six. Information technology systems, three eighty-nine, three twenty-three. Procurement's pretty much the same at one oh one. Treasury, four twenty-seven, six four, six seventy-four. One ninety-nine, one sixty for mayor and council. Health and safety, one oh six, three eighty-two. And policing, that one point seven, seven million. We're total of just over five million. I'm just going to, just because we have quite a few people coming after me to present. A lot of our budgets have thirty, forty lines in them when we start. And it comes down to this when it comes out from, from our budget software. So sometimes when you ask some of these questions, there, like, there's a lot of lines in, in there. So if, just if someone can't answer that, might be why we don't have it. And I say that because some of the, the questions about the contracted services, I would need to go back and get a bit more information to, to give a full breakdown of each one of those. My presentation is a little bit different. I will start with administration, the CEO clerk, with the rationale for increases and anomalies. First of all, just an overall for corporate services. I think most of, most of the council or no one understand that. When I came in in the end of two thousand twenty-one, we had quite a few positions open at the corporate service department. When I started adding up, it was six or seven positions and mostly managerial positions. They were left open. We managed to get them all filled by, by March of two thousand twenty-two. But there was a couple of months in there for a lot of the positions that were open. And that is a big, that is a big reason why the amount of labor and related are up in two thousand twenty-three. So we do have a full staff. Hopefully we have it all year long this, this time. And anyways, that's a, that's a, I, I won't put a dollar figure on it, but it's at least one full salary that, that we're up like, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. So in terms of administrative CEO clerk, one of the reasons for, for the increase was a temporary reinstatement of a position to work with the CEO on performance and in-place improvements and strategic initiatives. There was a, there was a, a position in place prior to CEO Smith coming into, into, into our organization that, that ended. It was more of a treasury performance improvement position. But he would like to bring a position on board for, to your contract to, to look after a lot of different initiatives that he'd like to put in place. I do have a bit of a breakdown here and I'll just, I won't go through them all, but some of the items that, that person will be looking after, develop, development change, management processes to ensure successful adoption of new programs and align a strategic plan, development, implement programs, policies, processes to improve corporate culture. Assist the CEO with supporting the development and implementation of the council's strategic plan. Implementation of corporate strategic planning and development performance frameworks to support organizational reporting for established goals. Work with departments to find efficiencies and support the development of performance improvement strategies and initiatives. So CEO does have a lot of initiatives and that's what you're looking for with that position that you'd like to put in place to work closely. One of the reasons. So the next one, again, the, the increase in labor cost due to the vacant positions as well as the coal and step increases and the, the pay equity and compensation review last year. In this, in this, record management clerk was allocated one day in two thousand twenty-two and in two thousand twenty-three. She's working closely with the clerk and going to be looking at that four days at over at, over at the town hall this year. So that is an increase of thirty to thirty-five thousand to our budget, but it would come on someone else's. One of the other items in, probably under admin and other would be a contract for strategic plan. We do have thirty thousand in there. As you, as council met with the CEO Smith in two thousand twenty-two, we updated you on the strategic plan and said that he wanted to go forward with an updated strategic plans or initiatives. And the last one, travel and training, so in-person conferences. So obviously, the last few years, most of the conferences were virtual. And now, you know, things are open back up and several of management, mostly the CEO, we're going down to conferences to, you know, make sure that we're on the right track. The other one would be succession plan for business continuity. So cross-training, that kind of thing, to make sure we have people ready for positions. That's it for the administration, CEO clerk. If you have any questions on that.
Any questions from council and administration, CEO clerk's office? Councilor Owen?
Yeah, it's not a question, it's just a comment. I think it's, it's very important and it's important for the public to know that we need to take part in these conferences and conventions so that we can network with senior levels of government. Without the help of senior levels of government, our taxes, well, no one would live here. They wouldn't be able to pay the taxes. And I know our, our current mayor and I believe the rest of council have also taken the and I believe the rest of council have also taken a stand that we have to put Kirkland Lake back on the map. I know as a ratepayer, when I wasn't on council, it was easy for me to say, that's a waste of money. That was my reaction as a reporter, too. That was my reaction. They're wasting money. Truth of the matter isn't. We're investing in networking, which hopefully will return us much more in terms of grants. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, sir. Anything more from Zoom attendees? Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, uh, to you, uh, Madam Mayor, to, uh, I forgot who's presenting this one here. Yeah, the director, Sean. Um, I'm looking at the, uh, the item on the, uh, ad- administration C O clerk's office. And this one, Mayor and Council, is going up by twenty thousand dollars. So, uh, is, does that mean that we're going to be doing more conferences compared to last time? Uh, how did that twenty thousand dollar, how did that come about?
We were not aware. It was the council. Um, so there was, uh, a change in the, um, way we were budgeting last year to this year. So we had different G L accounts that got merged into travel and training. So some last year, because I was new to the department, a lot of the, uh, materials and supply, a lot of those items were identified as materials and supplies. But now having been here a year, we were, we were in a better position to transfer them to the appropriate G L account. So it's just a matter of them having been changed from one, um, from one accounting bucket to the, to another. Uh, uh, but there is, uh, now that we have a full-time C O, um, there is an increase for the C O to attend, uh, various conferences. I believe, uh, if I'm looking at my paper here, there are about five. So yes, that comes with a cost. Uh, and it's the same with, uh, council's involvement as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from members? Okay, Director, you may proceed.
Yeah, the second, uh, second vision, uh, information technology. Um, it's a fair-sized increase as well. Um, just some of the reasons for the increase. Um, as you know, we have been doing a lot with our, uh, our security and, uh, you know, increasing our, our our technology, but there's some other things that, uh, that did happen, uh, in two thousand twenty-two. Um, our I, I T technician was in place, was funded, and, uh, now it's not funded. So that is a, that is probably a I want to say sixty, sixty thousand dollars difference in, in budgets. Um, in two thousand and twenty-two, um, we also, um, we also set up Microsoft Office three sixty-five licenses for corporation, for us corporation, um, as council was included in that as well. Um, that was, um, that was a sixty-five thousand dollar a year, uh, a year price tag on, on, on keeping that up. Um, and it was included in information technology. Um, some of the licensing and some of the, uh, products are, are, uh, are allocated across the, uh, across the different, uh, the, the different departments. Um, we have been, uh, we did look back at, uh, some of the service delivery reports that were done earlier and they, they did recommend trying to, trying to put everything and, and keep it more, more local in the, in the I T. So, so we did leave that there. Um, having said that, there was, uh, some, some licenses in place for past Microsoft products that we, that we were using in, in support of this. And, uh, they were actually, um, I'm not sure how licenses work, but they, uh, they weren't billing us for, for a few, several seventy years. So they were actually looking for a fair-sized amount of money that year. And, uh, when we moved over to Microsoft, uh, Office three sixty-five, that, that amount wasn't, uh, wasn't due anymore. So, you know, they're looking at three hundred thousand dollars. So, so, um, so that's, that's one of the things that have increased it. Um, obviously, um, last year we bought in, uh, uh, a new, uh, really upgraded firewall. So we were top of the line with that. Um, along with that comes, uh, uh, annual licenses for support and, uh, and other products. Um, and this is where, uh, I don't have all the breakdown, but, uh, those licenses, um, they, they would be on the contracted services of a hundred and sixty-three thousand in there. They are pretty well all licenses that, that, uh, covered the entire company, uh, across the board. Um, maybe in, uh, in our next meeting, I can, uh, I can break that right down. Um, I do have it written down on, uh, my initial budget, just not in the Um, we do have some minor capital in, uh, the I T budget. Um, uh, we, we started an upgrade to all the, uh, workstations, um, in, I think, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Um, we just need to finish updating the monitors. Um, now this is an ongoing, we'll have to keep upgrading in the next couple of years, but, uh, and, uh, we have memory and backups as well. So we, uh, we have that. We also, as, uh, as you had to, we do keep a few, uh, a few new computers available, uh, because if somebody goes down, they, I mean, we have to send it away and we have to have a few in place. And we were, we were down to almost nothing at that point. Last, uh, so we, uh, we started a project actually at the end of two thousand and, uh, twenty-two, uh, relocating, um, the I T office, which is on the main floor. Uh, it's a fair-sized office. And, uh, I'm sure back in the day, uh, we had quite a bit of, you know, we probably had lots of servers in there and used up the whole office. Now there's, uh, I think there's only ones, one or, one or two servers in one rack in there. That's, uh, taking up a lot of space. Um, as I said before, we have a full, uh, we have a full, uh, amount of, uh, of employees now in the, the, the Corporate Services Division. So, uh, we are looking at, uh, at moving that into, uh, a basement office downstairs where we can, uh, where, where, where I T can look after as well there. Um, and, uh, use that office, uh, for the, uh, the head of councils to, uh, move into and, uh, and start meeting with the public. Um, most of the rentals will be done by our internal maintenance staff. So the cost's not that, that much, but we do have some minor capital in there for, for, for that. Um, the, uh, we do have a, some minor capital for the basement part. And then I think some minor capital in either the, uh, the admin or treasury budget for, uh, the main floor office.
Counselor Dykens, uh, to you, Madam Mayor, to, uh, Dr. Clark. Um, cyber attacks have been more prevalent in the last few years. And, um, you did mention that we upgraded to, uh, a greater firewall. Um, do we have a plan as a town if we are attacked, if they did get through, um, you know, are they want ransom or to unlock your system? Do we have a plan? Has that ever been discussed?
I mean, we, we do have, um, sorry to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, what's your, um, we, we do have some, some bit of a roadmap on what can we do when something, there's something like that were to happen. Um, I was going to talk about it in, in our initiatives, but we do have a new, uh, a new I T manager that started in, uh, in, in March, um, just two or three weeks ago. And, um, is strong, the strength in the background is, uh, is management. So I T, so, um, we're gonna have, uh, have him work on both a strategy, a roadmap of what we're gonna do over the next five, ten years. And that will be also in it, just to make sure we have a good plan and if something should happen. But, um, yeah, the, uh, increased firewall and and stuff was put in place last year. I should, should help, you know, hear that that's what was going on. But it's not what it was.
Uh, Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, just a comment on, uh, cybersecurity. Uh, it's long overdue to put money into our computer systems. Uh, they were a little our kick. Uh, we had a lot of issues last year. And, uh, we
Yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor Kylie. Yeah, um, what we're going to do, yeah, just because we're, we're getting into cybersecurity issues. And that's not something that we really want to discuss and open, uh, council. So what we're gonna do is we're just gonna, to move on to, um, questions that are specific to the budget.
Uh, just my comment was that I'm glad we're investing in, uh, our computer systems to upgrade, uh, to meet today's standards. Thank you.
Absolutely. They've done an excellent job protecting us. Counselor Owen?
As to you, Madam Mayor, to Sean, uh, thank you for answering the contracted services question. Um, I see that in expenditures, our labor and related has gone down from the actual. Is that anticipation of less overtime? Because now we have two people in that department? We don't have the same. Oh, well, what I have here for twenty twenty-two is a hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-two is the actual.
What happened? That's big, Karen.
Oh. My apologies. That's all right. Um, it must be these, uh, doll around my glasses. Uh, my apologies, George.
Yes, sir. Okay. Anything further from council? We can proceed. Thank you, Director Gordon.
Okay, so next, uh, next department would be Treasury, Treasury. Um, there's a small increase there. Um, we do have some minor capital in the budget. Um, there hasn't been, uh, much done to our building for several years. Um, it's just paint and a bit of furniture for, that we're gonna start, uh, working towards, uh, uh, changing some furniture every year. Uh, last year we got a couple of chairs, that kind of thing. So nothing major. Uh, we do have an increased training budget with full staff. Um, we, uh, we, we hope to, uh, be able to have our, our treasurer and, and, uh, deputy treasurer and, and, you know, uh, look at, uh, look at, uh, um, attending some courses and that kind of thing. Um, there is, uh, an amount in there to fund, help fund the mat tax consultation or implementation. I know, uh, we're not sure we're gonna get to that this year, but there's, are some funds there, uh, should, uh, should that move forward. And, uh, the annual cost of the budget software, um, is, is now in there. Um, and, uh, we do see a lot of benefits to having that, uh, that budget software. Um, it's, it's a lot easier to, to, uh, put out, uh, you know, put out, uh, the documentation we need for the budget in the future, in your, uh, sure as well. Any questions on?
Any questions from council specific to treasury? None noted. You may proceed, Director.
Okay, so, uh, procurement, so I will, uh, I will, I will mention that. So yes, we, uh, you know, the, the amount was overestimated last year for the, uh, for the, uh, uh, labor related. Uh, there is only one person in that, uh, in, in that, that position that runs the department. So there's not a lot of difference in there, um, materials, supplies, and admin and other, actually little courses that, and, uh, and a few licenses that, that he takes.
Okay, Counselor Owen?
True, you worship, uh, Director Sean. And I'm sure I'm in procurement this time. Okay. Um, in admin and other, the actual for twenty twenty-two was six hundred and thirteen dollars. Uh, the budget is two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. I wonder if you could explain the, uh, difference.
It's true. Yeah. So last year there was a larger, there was a budget for training or primarily that wasn't used.
Okay.
Probably more functional, being new to the job and COVID fighting, that kind of training is still a little bit challenging. Um, so we're trying to plug that hole this year.
Okay. And although we started, uh, we started the procurement position in, uh, two thousand twenty-one, we're still working at, uh, you know, the, the, it'll take over all the procurement for the, for the council, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council? None noted. You may proceed, sir.
Um, Mayor and Council, so I think we have a few questions. I will, I will pin the, the other, uh, on the C O clerk, but, um, bit of an increase there. So I had, uh, for the members of council for corporate business access and, uh, by, uh, privacy, uh, conference. Um, the second would be increased travel and training. Um, I think there was only a few. I'm not sure how many went last year, not very many. So there is a, there is a few more for sure that are going down to the conferences that, uh, that, uh, that have, that have been, that increased in the budgets.
Any questions from council on mayor and council? Sean, can you just speak to the, um, amount of increase in our remuneration? Sorry. Yes, yeah. Just specific, yeah.
Yeah, so we've, we've included the one percent in there for the increase that, uh, that, uh, we talked about at the first of the year.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate that. Counselor Owen?
Am I, am I reading this correctly that the labor and related for council and mayor only went up by a thousand dollars? Am I reading this right?
For budget purposes, yes. Okay. So I just want to make that clear. That our raises amounted to a thousand dollars increased to the ratepayers.
Thank you.
Anything further from council via Zoom? Okay, sir, you may proceed.
Yep, just gonna, uh, go over human resources. So it did go down, um, by, I think, thirty thousand. Um, and the main reason was there wasn't a HR consultant in, uh, two thousand twenty-two that was used for one of our, uh, one of our departments. Just we did, uh, forget it, something, I'm gonna help with it. Um, it is no longer, uh, needed in two thousand point, didn't ask. Any other questions? That was asked. Um, so we did, we did leave a little bit in there because we do still have, uh, you know, the, of course, yeah, kind of thing that you know, but we're normally, certainly, um, under health and safety, the, the main increase is due to, uh, train the trainer courses. And I guess that is, uh, you know, people ask as well. It's in, in, under admin and other. Um, this, uh, this will allow us to reduce costs and other training budgets across the corporation by doing the training to trainer. Having said that, we have had some changes in the last, uh, the last few days that, uh, may, may affect, uh, what this looks like one forward in terms of health, uh, health and safety. Any questions?
Any questions? None noted?
Okay, so I'm going to leasing. Um, the policing, uh, contract did increase. So this is, uh, basically fixed, fixed cost from, uh, from the leasing. So it's, uh, went up sixty-five thousand. So that, uh, makes up a good portion of what the increase was. Um, one of the other, uh, reasons for the, uh, the change, um, we do have fluctuating grants that come in for, uh, our, you, you away and, and other ones. And, uh, I just choose the three-year average. We had been over, uh, basically over budgeting for it for the last, the last few years. And it's, it's quite a bit, uh, quite a bit less. So, so there was a decrease in, uh, twenty thousand in the, in the revenue coming in. So we actually overestimated the last years. Um, the last one was, um, Kirkland Lake Police Services Board, uh, recommendation to increase honorarians, um, basically from seven fifty to one thousand, uh, for the chair and five hundred to seven fifty for the board members. Uh, the secretary stays the same. So that's also in the budget. Um, and, uh, restart, and reinstatement of the regional board representation at P G M conference. So there is an amount in there for the conference as well, so. That bas- basically makes up, uh, the, the changes that occurred in the budget. Don't take any questions.
Any questions on leasing? None noted?
Okay, I'm going to, uh, challenges. So I just did challenges for overall corporate services, um, the departments. So, of course, employee attraction and retention, um, is, uh, is for sure a challenge, uh, in this world. Um, I went to, uh, Roma this year with, uh, C O and the mayor, and there was three different, uh, three different sessions on basically retention and, and attraction. Cause it is, it's across the, uh, the cross municipal board that it's tough to get people in. So that will continue to be a challenge, uh, limited funds for I T strategies. So, um, uh, the, um, the amount that's in the I T, most of it is, is spoken for, for licenses and that kind of thing. Um, there, we did not have an I T manager that, uh, that was involved in the budget. Uh, so I did a budget with the, uh, the technician. Um, which didn't leave a lot of room for that, but, um, but, uh, we'll work through that. So, um, a lot of the, uh, the I T with the, the new, uh, the new firewall and, uh, two years before that, it's a, that news, top-of-the-line server and that. So this is the matter of getting that integrated now and making sure that's working the best. Using, um, corporate policies, procedures, new development and training. Um, uh, we, uh, we, we still, uh, we're still trying to bring policies forward, uh, which is timing, everything we all, we know there's lots to do. Um, the, uh, the new position that the C O was looking to implement, uh, will help with that as well. Um, the amount of, the amount of internal and external report requests. Um, I was talking to, uh, our treasurer. Um, I was, uh, I've been municipal for a couple of years and I know that the A M C T O did a, a study on it. I think they said there's Um, I was, uh, I've been municipal for a couple of years, and I know that the AMCTO did a, a study on it, and I think they said there's four hundred reports that come out of, uh, the motive municipality now, so it is just a lot of reporting there, so that makes it, makes it kind of tough. Um, streamlining and increasing routine disclosure of corporate records, so, uh, updating website, implementing iCompass public face and portal and enhancing corporate branding. Uh, modernization, implementing the town's records management program and, uh, updating, uh, procurement policies and internal controls. So we do actually have a new updated, uh, policy that we brought to S and T that we're just starting to work on now, so hoping that, that forward in the next couple of months. Upcoming initiatives, um, identifying enhanced, uh, reporting options with newly acquired budget software. So we, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna look to see what we can do with that software, improve nor, new employee orientation packages. So, uh, with, you know, with our, with our challenge of bringing new people in, this is one of the things we'd like to do to make sure that when we get them here, they're, you know, booked after. Improve the town's reports management program, update the town's strategic plan, um, and then the temporary reinstatement of positions.
Thank you for that. Anything further from council? Nothing noted? Thank you, sir. Our next presenter is Tech Pioneer Residence.
Hey, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity for you to counsel. Um, many of you may know, some of you may not know, that, um, our budget is primarily funded through the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, with the fiscal period being April first to March thirty-first, which is different than the municipality's fiscal year. Um, last Friday, the provincial budget was announced, um, with the following increases noted for long-term care. Um, so increase to level of care funding with a two percent increase to nursing and personal care envelopes, two percent in program and support envelopes, two percent in other accommodations, two percent in global funding, and two percent, the two percent in other community, uh, other accommodation funding has not been increased since two thousand and nineteen. There is a seven, nine point seven percent increase for food and nutrition. Um, increased funding for the development of, um, infection control leads, um, infection control education for all staff, increased funding for behavioral supports, and the false prevention funding, IPAC funding and minor capital funding have been merged into one minor capital line to decrease the amount of reporting, so that will make both, both Lloyd and I very happy. Well, three ninety-seven, I guess. Um, as many of you know and have heard, that the, the actual COVID funding will not be continued past March thirty-first of this year. Uh, rational for increases, so we are seeking to add some administrative support to, to our department, um, for all of the management teams to offset some of the report, reporting requirements that is falling onto treasury. Um, so that would be myself, the Business Office Coordinator, the Director of Care. Um, we have a, we have secured a fifteen thousand dollar, um, funding piece that we are permitted to use for this, that will offset some of those costs. Um, we're hoping that this person can take on some clerical duties, the reception, the minutes, the filing, that none of us have the time to complete. Um, there are increases to frontline nursing staffing as per the ministry's directive to increase to the four-hour minimum care standard by two thousand twenty-four. We are currently sitting at three hours per resident per day. With the proposed increases, we will be at three hours and forty-two minutes per resident per day. That is an increase of from two hundred and forty-two hours of nursing care a day to two hundred and seventy-seven point seven hours of nursing care per day. Permanent PSW, PSW wage enhancement, which is funded, is part of the increase, the elimination of the COVID nineteen funding. But with increases to provincial, um, budgets, we think will offset those costs for labor supplies and staffing. And we have lots of overtime in the last few years related to sick time, short-term disability time, limited staffing, um. Every day, I get either a phone call or an email from a staffing agency. The cost of a nurse per hour, just the per hour costs, eighty-five to hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. Plus, you have to pay travel, accommodations, food, and all of those things on top. So overtime is a savings for us, but it is, it is quite significant.
Any questions? Any questions for members via Zoom?
No.
Thank you.
None from me.
Uh, challenges for the upcoming year. Um, so healthcare across all sectors continues to struggle with staffing shortages. Um, we have been very, very fortunate. We are the only long-term care home in the district. Um, and one of very few in the province that have not used any agency staffing. We have been very, very lucky. But we continue to struggle with recruitment of qualified RNs, RPMs, and PSW. Um, we work really hard to continue the relationships that we have post-secondary, Northern College, Stu College, and accredited, um, distance learning online schools, um, because that's where we get our people from, getting them into our homes, letting them do placements within our homes. They see, you know, what the work is like, and that's how we've been successful to recruit these people. Like I mentioned earlier, we continue to struggle with short-term disability leaves. Healthcare workers have worked tires, tirelessly the past two to three years with heightened scrutiny, heightened workflows, staffing shortages, and many, many challenges. We are seeing increased short-term disability leaves and expect this to continue. Um, we will be going through our accreditation process with CARF in late two thousand twenty-three. It was supposed to happen with June, but it, in June, but it was pushed forward because of COVID. Um, we continue to work on ensuring that we're compliant with the Fixing Long-Term Care Homes Act. And then post-candidemic recovery, funding, supply management, staffing, reporting. We are seeing the same struggles as Director Sakreter with supply, receiving supplies, long-term waits for things that are necessary. Um, not necessarily a challenge, but we are entering into QP ten seventy-four negotiations next week um, for renewal of their collective agreement, and we're anticipating that there will be some kind of impact as well.
Any questions thus far from council? None noted. Please proceed.
Very good. So we're, we're trying very hard to return to normal life for our residents, for our staff. It has been a long three years of restrictions and heightened restrictions even more than the general public. So as of this Friday, restrictions are being, um, changed for long-term care. We have consulted with our family council, resident council, and the entire resident population. So we'll be having changes to our visitor screening, testing policies, um, by Friday. Quality improvement plans that were paused for the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two um, years have been reinstated. So by Friday, your quality improvement plan has to be submitted. Um, and these are things that we can actually see outcomes for. So false prevention, use of antipsychotic medications, and resident satisfaction are the three, three things that, that are on the top of our quality improvement plan. Uh, increased frontline staffing, like I mentioned before, to meet that minimum four-hours ministry standard. Uh, accreditation and re-implementation of many processes that were paused during COVID just because of restrictions. Um, live orientations versus online search learning. Um, in services for staff that are bringing people into our home, vendors coming into our home and doing things for the residents. So those are all upcoming as well.
Anything from council? You are easy. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your.
Next up, we'll have Development Services, Airport, Animal Control, Economic Development, Planning, Building Services, Residential Development, and Waste Management.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For you to counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Development Services budget. I have to be clear that, uh, there are some aspects of the budget that are prepared by other individuals that I'm not fully conversant in. So if you have a question that I can't answer, I'll take it back and I'll find you an answer for it. As, uh, the mayor pointed out, budget coverage in this regard is airport, animal patrol, building, economy development, planning, residential development, waits. Before I begin, I have to draw council's attention to a couple of, uh, important points, in my opinion. Bylaw is a pillar of that development, uh, of the Development Services Department. It is, um, a concrete board under the planning section, so as you don't, you will see it as a separate outline item, but it's there. Um, there will be changes in future reporting on the budgets. Uh, specifically airport waste will be moving over to public works. Uh, that will be something that you'll see, uh, recorded through that department in the future, and, uh, any changes there. There will be adjustment to line, my, line item amounts based on factors such as when new hires come aboard or leave. Uh, as you know, the department has been in a state of flux. We are trying to recruit. We don't know really when that's going to happen. We plan for it as best as we can, but it will affect the numbers in the future. There are also a number of one-offs in the budget, contracted work that is of limited duration, uh, specifically strategic planning, building consultants, planning consultants. These are initiatives that we have taken on to meet a specific need and/or fill in blanks in operations that happen as a result of staff vacancies. You know, we don't have a planner, we're running into items that we need that assistance for. Uh, and we have staff going off, uh, particularly maternity leave, so again, we need assistance. Uh, with those caveats in place, I'd like to begin, uh, I would prefer, if I could go through this presentation online first to explain where the variances are, why, uh, what the challenges initiatives are, and then go through the line to line, because I think it might give you a better context to understand what we're talking about. So, first slide again, it is, uh, about the one-offs, and it's just identifying some of these consultants as I will be making references to them, and I don't want you to confuse who a GL Richards are, uh, is and ours, I'm building consults. Can you go to the, yeah, thanks. I'll begin with the airport. You'll notice that there's a significant increase in, uh, some of the revenues, but also a matching increase in some of the purchasing or certain expenses. A lot of that is due to the, uh, price of aviation gas and other materials like, well, specifically the gas. You'll also notice that there are labor increases. That is due to, uh, both the COLA and the, uh, the equity impacts. But also, we had, uh, some staff reassignments to cover staffing shortages at the end of last year, beginning of this year, that terminated in, uh, March. Those are the big ones, that waste. Again, you're gonna see an increase in revenue. There's been a change, I understand, in the revenue that comes back to the town from the recycling, the Blue Box program. You'll see that reflected in revenue column. Labor increases, again, we had to rearrange, uh, our staffing, and that put a, a bit of an additional hit on us. We do anticipate that with Public Works taking over these two, uh, divisions, that you're, we'll see a rationalization because you have greater manpower available for, uh, for the needs. Building, reduced revenue, uh, is, part of that is, um, just to rationalize the building permit sales. They were, I think, somewhat high in their estimations in previous years. We brought it back in line with what, uh, the actuals were. You do see that there's, uh, more revenue, but that's a transfer from the, uh, the working capital reserve. Contractive expense, uh, contracted services expenses increase. Again, we're anticipating, uh, anticipated longer period of vacant staffing positions. And that has resulted in increased reliance on contracted CBO services that will continue because even with the new staff coming on, they're not necessarily trained up to the right level yet, and for legislation purposes, we think that. There are also additional funds set aside for legal expenses based on what we've run into in the past and to address emergency property community standards issues. I'll come back to that point when we talk about initiatives. Um, also, we do have new, uh, young staff, who, as everybody know, um, that require, uh, increased training access, and that's something that I I, I think is very important, because we can't fill these positions through recruitment. Um, if we have somebody local, we're much better if we're investing in the training, because they have a stake in the community, they'll probably stay. Um, planning and residential development. I don't spend a lot of time on residential development. It's projection of what, uh, land sales will be like. You'll notice that there was a huge increase in two thousand twenty-two, but that was, uh, tight-toed sale of the property in the industrial park. Within planning, yes, there are labor increases. One, we do need to find a director. As well, we brought on additional, uh, contract staff to cover maternity leave and require an overlap between the people to make sure that, uh, there's, uh, well, no breakdown in the service delivery standards. Also, the contracted services, as GL Richards, as I said before, they have been brought in, um, to both bring, uh, to, to do backup work as well as to take on some special projects we won't have the capacity to do in-house. And we do also have Taller that did some surveying for property development that we're bearing the cost for now regarding to, uh, some of the areas in the community. Economic development, you see a decrease in expenses, and that's anticipation of upcoming changes both in staffing, department responsibilities, and strategic directions. One of the key points that we're going to be doing in two thousand twenty-three is strategic planning. Um, I don't think in, I, I'm cheap. I don't think you should be going out and spending a lot of, uh, time and money when your, both your orientation and your, uh, intent of what you're doing may be changing. Save that, get your, uh, plan done, then you find your resources and you had to, uh, address that in the future. What are the challenges? Um, I try to keep it just as focused as I can as to what impacts on our operations. Uh, I'm trying to find a sunset to ride into. Uh, I plan for that to be this year. Um, my wife, you won't argue with me. There is no Director of Development Services in place for the part of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, oh, again, I just don't know when we can replace that. We have not had a lot of luck in hiring there, but I think we do have some good leads. We do have a new CDO in training. Uh, that is working exceptionally well right now. So I'm very hopeful for that, and we also have the planning and industry to go on attorney meeting. I think we'll be able to maintain the service level that we offer the public right now with the steps that we've taken. It's when we get into really big issues that it's going to take us longer, because again, we have to process it and then take it over to a contractor to work with. Bring us through. That means a slowdown and a possible effect on service liv, delivery levels. Again, I'm saying this one thing, limited options and resources available to remedy issues such as ventilations and property con, and community standard bylaws. You drive by, you see a horrible yard, and you're getting calls from everybody, why aren't you fixing it? Why aren't you cleaning it up? Decredent building. We don't have those resources. We'd like to look at some. We'd like to look at some ways at addressing that. Putting stuff on the roll, it's not particularly effective as I'm sure pressureable volume. Uh in in some cases, there is, there's nobody to deal with. People who are deceased and such like that. And that has been a real four, and I think it's only going to get worse. Some properties that have been left continue to deteriorate, so we want to take that on as one of the challenges that has to be addressed in this coming year. So what are we doing? Well, all the initiatives are tied back into the challenges, create an economic development tourism strategy, uh guide future development. That's for the corporation, uh the town corp, the town of Kirkland Lake, as well as a tourism development corporation. Construction and charge technology operations, all the applications are in. We've received uh confirmation of funding from one. I hope to receive another one soon and I'm speaking to Char tomorrow. I'm trying to find out when they will begin that project. I'd like to think that they can begin it in maybe May. And then uh that gives us a lot of time to transfer that work over to public works as well as to plan then the conclusion of the project by the end of the year. That would be the idea. Ongoing review and revision of bylaws, policies, processes, procedures. That to me is really important. We did a pretty good stat of that last year, but it has to continue. Uh they have to be modernized, they have to be practical, and they have to be understandable. In some cases, we're not finding that. We're really working closely with our contractors on that. When we brought forward the idea of a planning consultant, we said there's the day to day stuff and then there's special projects. Well, as we're dealing with staffing changes, which which are the special projects? I don't want to over promise on that, but I do think that one of them we need to get on is industrial land. We don't have, we need to find out how we can go about that, even if we're just beginning that. Obviously, launch a tourism development corporation, which I'm happy to say is just about fully complete, and implement the map. I'll be bringing back a report to council on that looking at forward. Uh explore feasibility of implementing administrative monetary penalties. Uh this is what I'm talking about when I'm saying that there are, we have to find other ways to try and make things happen in our legislation. Administrative monetary penalties are a fairly recent addition uh to to the toolkit enabled underneath the uh by the municipal affairs, municipal affairs and housing. They're basically an alternative where the municipality says, okay, you've violated this. It's not a a ticket that goes to the court. It's a ticket that comes to the town. And if you don't pay it, it doesn't just get added added on to the rule, which doesn't seem to worry people. Instead, it becomes a charge that has a penalty and interest living with it. So it hits you in the wallet sooner. It, why would you use it? One is to get away from the court system because it's a little cumbersome and it costs a lot of money. You're not getting a lot out of that. And the other one is to try to help put an end to some items of activity, again, like, oh, I'm not going to cut my lawn. I'm just going to leave all cars piled up. What are you going to do about it? So that's something that I know Kingston is using and a number of other municipalities are. It's something that I think we really do need to look into. But it's going to require, okay, how do you do it? Who's going to do it? What's your legal exposure? So there's going to be uh some additional costs there with, you know, uh getting lawyers involved, making sure it's airtight. And if it doesn't work, well, okay, council needs to know that so we can start looking at other options. Also, then again, as I said, the process of transferring airport and ways to the public works. And would you mind if I just grab the glass and water because I'm so drunk right now.
Well, if you want, we'll add to the first slide. If you want, they go back to the first.
No. Are there any questions on that part if we're going with the line by lines or anything?
Any questions to this point? None noted, you may proceed.
Line by line again, I'll answer them as well as I can, starting with the airport. Revenue, user fees, you'll see that there's a change there. User fees often uh before I refer to again, like gas sales, um the stuff that has been brought to council, you've approved the price there of and off we go. Recoveries such as landing fees, uh they also cover stuff like hangar rentals and that. You're seeing a dip in that from over uh the past, well, twenty two actuals, uh it's always an estimate and a guess because you just don't know what kind of traffic you're getting there. You don't have a a magnet that's pulling people to the airport. It's a tool that they're using. So in that, that will change from time to time. Labor and related, uh you'll see that again in twenty twenty two, the actuals were a little bit higher than the estimated estimated and as well, you're seeing a higher projection here. Again, we've had three months where we've had to move staff around and that comes with a a a cost as well with the uh code and the pay equity, as I said. Materials and supplies, that's also includes the purchasing of the fuel that we're selling onwards. Uh contracted services, you know, you run an airport, what are you contracted services for? We have regulatory obligations that often require a third party. So it could be in runway signage, it could be state of the airport. Uh I haven't dealt with that that much, but I do recall saying often some of those. It's really for the airport, yeah.
Counselor, oh.
Yes. To you, Madam Mayor, to Director. When we get to user fees, um when that comes up, can we be presented with a a user fee that's consistent with our other user fees, whereas if you're uh they live in Kirkland Lake, your user fee is one thing, and if you're outside Kirkland Lake, your user fee is higher because you're not supporting the subsidy that the rest of taxpayers. I know we've discussed it in the past, but I'm just wondering if we could actually do something about that when we get to user fees.
In a, yes, uh definitely. I think one thing to be cautious of is that the that specifically applies to people renting at the hangar space.
Pretty much, yeah.
And I think we only have one that's from Kirkland Lake, so it's almost as if the user fee is for everybody else. But I think that you are absolutely correct and it has to be clarified as to what it is so that precedent setting going forward, you know why one number will be different and it's clear to all the users. Yes, we can bring that through.
And I I know there's a risk involved because some of the small planes, they could store on their own property as opposed to the hangar, but it just doesn't seem consistent with the rest of their.
Absolutely.
Anything further from council regarding airport? Okay.
Okay, animal control, it uh it is a contracted service. Uh so you see that uh in that line item and it's a continuing similarity in price. Uh user fees that primarily is the licenses. Excuse me. The, we adjusted that to reflect the realities. Uh again, that will have to, that will go through a period of change because our realities from the last two and a half years of COVID have faced. The other aspect of it is that you're constantly encouraging people to comply as opposed to penalize. I think we need to strike a slightly better balance on that going forward in the future. We'll keep to have that conversation. Any questions on that?
Any questions on animal control? None noted.
Getting into building and it's probably, well, with that and planning, but definitely interesting for the last couple of years. Our user fees, we brought down the uh estimation on building permit sales more in line with what past your actuals were. Again, it's going to vary as to what's coming through the door. We, I like to think that will continue to be as busy as we were last year. It was good. Uh recoveries, uh this could be anything else that's being charged back. If there's a property wherein there is a property owner who is or has expressed a willingness, you know, if you go do it, I'll pay. It's easier for me to to have the the heartache. We're putting that in and we do have one such property identified as such that that is showing up there twelve thousand. Our transfers, again, that's RSM, the building consultants, um that's a transfer from the working capital reserve. When I get into the uh expenditures, labor, uh this covers both the CBO, um CBO and training as well as the building inspector, uh materials and supplies. We are putting in uh maintaining memberships and subscriptions uh that we didn't pursue very much before. But when we were going through the interview process, that became actually a point of contention because the people that are in this field, the level of knowledge and access to knowledge that they require, that's usually on the employer. We hadn't been spending that much on it. So we're trying to make that as being part of a more attractive workforce, uh workplace. Have been another um training and legal, as I say, we've increased the legal there for that. We do have to have the additional training and we are putting more money into and into public relations. Where something is coming up, we want to advertise and that's something that both in planning and in building, we have to emphasize because it's not fair. You're going out knocking on doors and claiming money, but you're not telling people what's going on. So we're strong on that. The contracted services, it is RSM and it's also uh co- uh covers any contractors that we're using for demolitions that will occur. We'd like to do these three of these these uh this year. As well, it's uh any kind of other services that may have to come uh forward. Uh what we did do this year in the budget is put some money aside so that when you do see that really decrepit looking building, that's now a a problem. We're not coming back to council and saying, listen, we have to act and then have a four week wait period, but put ten thousand uh or so aside so that we can go and act and protect the community. We'll stop on that.
Any questions? None noted, you may proceed.
Thank you, uh through you, Madam Mayor, um economic development, uh grants, I'm kind of like shaking the government tree to see as much money as will fall out as possible. And so I estimate that we will be able to get some grants for some of the work that we're trying to undertake. It's not as clear and straightforward as it used to be in the past, but I think that is something we can work on. Part of that is also money that we're looking at um leveraging for the tourism development corporation as well. We can set some dollars aside. We have done that in uh materials and supplies and contracted services. Whatever that corporation is going to work on, try to find some other additional leverage dollars from there. If it's going to cost you thirty thousand, try to bring it down to fifteen or to five, something like that. Um recoveries, again, uh that's primarily from the uh medical, uh medical that world, the world, the health center. Uh and that flows through economic development. Other revenue, uh we also have a sawmill that we have, I believe, closed books on now. And so economic development was the uh budget through which the interest payments and uh payments back to the government uh had flowed. You'll see that that has dropped off and shouldn't see that again in the future. It's gone.
There's, yeah, so just a side comment there. So what you're, basically what we're losing in rents here, those properties, once we go through the process with the the people that run the mill, um the assumption is they're gonna wanna buy the mill for as part of that lease agreement that was entered in two years ago, and that'll put it back on the actual. So we'll be, you know, what this covers by what we lose in rents will probably recover a significant, but significant portion of it in municipal taxes going forward. So it's a switch of the of the actual property. So other than that, I'm not sure there's much more.
It's been around for twenty years? Something like that. Yeah, it's been a while.
So sorry, this this line, um when we do the audits, that's the incubator funding? Is that where, okay, okay.
Contracted services, like I said, strategic planning, a marketing uh project, uh corporation setup and initial funding so you can get some stuff done. Uh general, we always put dollars aside because history shows that as over the course of year, council will say, what about this? Or this great opportunities come by. Uh recent examples would be biomass supply. We had put money aside and it turned out we needed it in a very fast order and we got a company out of it to work. Uh we've also put underneath uh materials and that, well, within the expenditures, uh key partnerships and projects. Uh one is the regional tourism organization. If the corporation comes up, well, okay, here's your membership. Uh the other one is the Northern Policy Institute. They've really come a long way. I have some work uh through the membership with them that they've been doing that looks really good. Uh projects, there's uh Ride the North. It's a regional stormmobile promotion that uh we've done for the past five years. And it's usually, it it covers the entire season, but it always has a strong orientation at the tail end of the season where people are not down south, they're looking for a place for a final ride and we're bringing them up. It's uh for three thousand dollars or so, it's it's actually paid dividends very well. It's partnership that we do with the Stormmobile Corp.
Any questions regarding economic developments? None noted. You may proceed.
Planning, uh revenues, the uh cover leases, uh encroachments, application fees that we collect. Um transfers, again, that comes from, uh sorry, that refers to Jalen Richards, the uh consultant as well as other um that I mentioned earlier for the uh survey. Uh expenditures, you'll see an increase again with the labor that is uh covers the existing planning administrator, the replacement planning administrator, the director and a bylaw officer. So you know, there's a jump in there because especially the bylaw officer had not been included in the in the in the past. Uh materials and supplies relatively same, and then in others, again, increased uh advertising and public uh relations. Contracted, uh also included there, and this is not uh drawn from the reserves, but uh CGIS are mapping and information management program, so that is managed through that uh particular department. Residential development, again, it is a best guess as to uh property sales. And as I've referred previously, you see a huge jump in twenty twenty two, but the reality is usually around two hundred thousand.
Any questions? Oh, Counselor, I can.
Uh to you, Madam Mayor, to the Director Husk. I noticed under a few of them, like planning, for example, contracted services um went up significantly. I know you mentioned something in there, but being new to the table, like can I hear a little bit more about what's included in that hundred ninety system?
Yes, uh the large, the lion's share of that would be for Jalen Richards. They were a project we have brought to council and trying to think, I think it was ahead of January. And uh it's a consulting firm that will be reviewing on its, I can't remember exactly the phraseology to use, but the day to day work would be reviewing all our policy procedures, bylaws, and then uh to be appointed for uh uh specific projects such as identifying industrial land, updating your vision plan. Uh another one like Pellic, if we have an area that has to be, you you can't do anything unless you know exactly what you're dealing with. That's a surveyor that comes in. This is the kind of stuff we'll do.
Any further questions from council? None noted.
Thank you. Waste, uh again, uh our revenues, I've got it from the picking piece, blue box, uh operations that we're running. There, I noticed that there was an increase in what we're receiving for the blue box uh under the blue box program this year. So that's recorded there. Uh labor uh related and at the, within waste prior to this year, you had landfill attendants, manager and someone to spot that person, uh kind of a floater who was working between the airport and uh the waste category so that to balance vacation times, sick times and that. Um materials and supplies, that is again, anything from your blue box sales, you're purchasing them and then reselling them. You'll notice that there was a a dip in uh twenty twenty two, the actuals being higher than the budgeted. But it came as that was what was required. So we've done that, those sales will be realized then again in twenty twenty-three. Contracted services, that's primarily the collection of waste, household waste as well as recycling. As well as landfill operations there. And we also have regulatory commitments that we have to meet, VCA testing, well monitoring, et cetera. For which we bring in people. Here's that's beyond our scope, sir.
Any further, any questions from council on waste? Councilor Owen.
It's to you, Madam Mayor, Director Husk. I notice it's not a big difference, but I'm just curious, labor and related. For the twenty-three budget is actually slightly down from.
That reflects, sorry.
From twenty twenty-two.
That reflects the fact that we're trying to, if we move it over to public works, they have more personnel available. So the increase that we saw between January and March hopefully is offset by less when it goes over there. So we're trying to anticipate that.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Anything further from council? Excellent, thank you very much. We want to move on to public works, roads, water and wastewater. You may proceed, sir, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilor. So the overview, Public Works from twenty, oh, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Is not a significant change, actually, it's. Probably the closest I've ever seen, actually. So on that note, that's very good. I don't see anything that's unforeseen that would actually change that. And as I just actually mentioned, the overall operations budget requirements has not really increased this year. Many minor changes were actually made to the individual items within the budget. To better reflect the actual cost and to better reflect what the department aims to actually achieve in. Twenty twenty-three. The one change to the budget worth mentioning is the addition of the administrative position, but the recent changes to the department. Adding a full-time executive assistant will help with the added administrative requirements to public works. The existing administrative assistance position will be changed to a part-time. Challenges for this year, well, there are a few. The stormwater system in Kirkland Lake presents several challenges. There are many areas where ditch cleaning is required, but access is limited. Or restricted or actually obstructed. The roads division will be starting the process of accessing these difficult areas to clear the vegetation. To inspect the culvers, pipes and assess the air and assess the situation. To determine what type of equipment will be required to access these areas to complete this work. Also, the roads division will be undertaking the task of cleaning catch basins and pipes. Using a rag truck. In twenty twenty-two, part of the storm system on Allen Ave between the complex and Fifth Street collapsed. The storm system in this area is lower than the creek's bottom, which, which is nearby. Which means that this, this system is always submerged and must build up head pressure to discharge into that creek. So it's actually lower than the actual stream. So a full replacement of that is actually required. And consultation with an engineering firm is required due to the complexity. So pickup trucks are heavily rusted, do themselves and such. And a deemed road worthy bodywork is scheduled for some of our vehicles. This will extend the life of our assets.
Any questions thus far from council? Councilor Owen?
Yes, to you, Madam Mayor, when it comes to trucks. When is the last time we've done an assessment on whether or not we need full-size pickup trucks? Full-size pickup trucks cost more money, they cost more money to operate. And often when I see our town pickup trucks driving around town, they have very little equipment in them. And I'm just wondering if management has given any consideration. To the idea of purchasing some, that's some, some full size, like if you're plowing, you need a full-size pickup. There are certain equipment that you need full-size, but I just, I would, I was wondering if. We're looking into that and also if we purchase smaller trucks when, when we could. We would be lowering our carbon footprint as well, which would be good for the environment.
Sure.
And the other question I have is, have we looked at all them two hybrid trucks? The difference in cost and looking at our carbon footprint because we know down. I suspect down the road it's going to be legislated.
I can't answer those questions right now, but I will find out the answer.
Yeah.
And I will get, get that information back to you.
Okay, and further to that, in the request, I think it was for two, two trucks for the water. If I remember correctly, you said they were unsafe, are those ones that, because I had asked the CAO. Are those ones that are rusted out?
I've noticed that there's a few of them actually like that. It's not too bad as long as it's acted on soon.
Yeah.
But if it. Is let go for, say, an extended period of time, I think that you'll end up. Possibly losing that, that, that truck. Just that the repair repairs would be more than, than the value.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just remember seeing that there was a request for two trucks. And it said for safety reasons, but it didn't say what the problem with the trucks were. I mean, if it's a great job, then we get the great job done. If it's rusted of the frame, then we get rid of the truck, right?
Yeah.
Once those are too separate in the capital budget, there's, there's monies. Requested. This is the operating budget where they're going to fix trucks, so still rolling.
Correct, okay, so, yes.
Thank you. Councilor Owens?
No, I think, um, no, I'll wait off on this one.
Okay, anything further at this point from council? You may proceed.
Thank you. Upcoming initiatives. For Public Works to develop a maintenance program for the stormwater system. Including open ditches, entrance culverts, pipes, manholes and catch basins. To develop a sidewalk maintenance plan, including repairs and replacement. The department purchased a new infrared asphalt heater attachment in twenty twenty-two. Which is mounted to our trackless units. This attachment has not yet been utilized. Though we are planning to train staff in the spring and expect this machine, this new machine. Will help with the asphalt patching and repairs on an ongoing basis. We plan on developing a method to inspect and address the maintenance of open ditches. In difficult to reach areas along the path of Murdoch Creek and other areas. In the process of transferring airport and ways from the development. Services Department, that's actually, actually in the, the work. Actually, right now. We just started that about a week and a half ago.
Yes, Councilor Deacon.
To you, Madam Mayor, to Brian, Brian Spring. On one of your slides, it mentioned the maintenance and repairs of sidewalks. Is that in addition to the plan that Stefan shared with us at the last?
I think that that's in actually conjunction with.
So it's not the same.
It's, it's much like the truck comment. Yes, there is sidewalk work going to be done under the capital budget as part of those, any of those projects that get done there. Do sidewalks at the same time and then there's an operating amount to go out there and fix sidewalks that aren't necessarily. Part of roads projects and stuff like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Nothing further, thank you, sir. Oh, Zoe Brown, you should have come back.
Almost, right?
Yeah, we forgot, watch wastewater. We, we let you off too early.
Yes, that, that was part one. Water and wastewater, operating budget review. Again, very similar to the first one, there's a marginal increase. Rather, rather insignificant to what I've seen. And so. The, the overall operations budget requirements for water and wastewater, it has not. Significantly increased for. This year, many minor changes were made to the individual items within the budget. To better reflect the actual cost and to better reflect what the department aims to, to achieve. Dollars were added to the contracted services for repairs and improvements to our water plant. Wastewater plant and lift stations, which are directly related to operations. These items were requested by OAK and have been deemed necessary to complete this year. The water distribution system presents several challenges. The issues are related to age, pipe material, lack of cathode protection. The incrustation inside the pipes, lack of head pressure from the water tower, et cetera. There's numerous small nuances. All these factors make the distribution system very fragile and several factors affect pressure. In numerous locations throughout town. The sanitary distribution system also presents several challenges mainly related to the age. And chosen backfill. That, that was actually used, apparently it was a lot of shot rock. When the system, well, the shot rock was utilized when the system was actually installed. We suspect the system is taking out a lot of stormwater through unwanted infiltration. And I also think that on that note too, that a lot of the homes have subways. And they have downspouts that have been tied in directly to the sanitary sewer. So it's. Kind of a two-fold issue there. The fire hydrants are also proving to be a challenge as they do not currently display the correct colors. To identify fire flow. Fire flow data appears to be incorrect and is deemed unreliable. So therefore, new fire flow data is required for all of your town. We are developing a program to assess the current fire flows for all fire hydrants. We're developing a new maintenance pro program as well for all of the fire hydrants. And we're in the process to modify our water system's flushing. Program to better reflect the requirements of a unilateral directional flush. That hasn't really been followed in the past. And we're also in the process to develop a monthly report for. Council on the ongoing activities at our water plant, wastewater plant, water main breaks and much, much more. To help with accountability and transparency.
Excellent. Councilor Owens?
I hate to ask this question. For the answer, if I'm looking at these numbers. When we voted on the increase a few weeks ago, it was brought to our attention that this was just to, to be able to keep us up to par. With maintenance challenges coming down the road. Is it safe to assume that the numbers that are presented here, that there's no parentees between them, so we're in surplus, then? Don't have to ask for more money, the waterworks is here?
So the, the bottom line that you're seeing there on both of those programs are surpluses, which. By default in their legislation and by council direction are going into reserves.
Yeah.
So there is an increase, whether it, you know, this is kind of the same discussion we've had before. The, the asset management plan has, has suggested some rates to try and. Find the pump to get ready for the, for the extras that are coming, so that's incorporated here. You know, I really don't know that it'll be adequate. It doesn't necessarily, you know, it's, it's an average, twenty-year average built into that program. And there's a certain percentage each year and what falls out the bottom.
Yeah, the back part I got and so, so the three percent we voted on this year, that's included in this, what we see here.
Yes.
So, but again, I'll, maybe you answered it and I missed it or I'm not.
Probably misunderstood.
Do we have to ask for more money over top of that three percent we've already asked this year? Because in, I remember that report, it was said, it was very clear that it was at this time.
Yeah, I don't believe that's in here, like, like you're talking, so the operating part of the, of the budget.
Yeah, operating or. I'm at the wrong meeting?
Nope, you're, you're probably at the right meeting.
It's been a long day.
I agree. I don't think there's another revenue increase incorporated in this, in this part of the budget. So it didn't actually happen that there was an operating increase as well as the asset management.
Which is already, okay.
Yes.
So this is good news.
Yes, I think so. Well, we know what the, the increase in water is limited to the earlier one of this. Yes, and wastewater.
Councilor Shava? Councilor Shava, you're on you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. To you, Madam Mayor, to the Director of, I believe, Public Works. I don't know what his title is. I'd like to say, well, thank you very much for being very frank and candid about the. Fire flow. Data from fire hydrants and it's been really pretty much nagging problems for anybody. for anybody that will be coming in to do any uh work in town, so I appreciate that. My question to you is, uh, this uh, the fire flow program that you indicated, is it gonna be something in-house, be developed, or something that will be uh developed uh somewhere else and is the cost uh embedded in, in this budget here, if it's gonna be done uh uh somewhere else? Thank you.
Yes, um, from my understanding, uh, there are funds for actually a consultant, which will be E X P, who we have been working with over the past years. Um, as far as the labor aspect in conjunction with the E X P, we hope to actually soften that cost by utilizing our own staff and with the addition of two summer students.
Thank you for that, Counselor Owen.
Yes. Very, very worshipful. I'm very happy to see that we budgeted less for labor and related in two twenty-three than our actual in two uh twenty-twenty-two, but I'm just wondering, how did we do that? How did we decrease our labor costs? Cause labor costs are, are going up all the time.
Well, my notes are actually saying that I think I know which line that you're referring to, which is right under expenditures.
Yes.
They were in related, but if we carry it down to the uh total expenditures, it's actually noted that there's added dollars for the executive assistant to be hired. And the existing administrative position will be changed to part-time. Um, these minor changes were made throughout, throughout the budget to uh better reflect actual costs and to better reflect what we aim to, to achieve uh this year.
I think I can throw in your accounting side of this.
Yeah.
Um, well, you know, when there, when works guys work on any particular project, their time sheets are coded. Water, wastewater, public works. So I think this is a reflection of what, what uh Stefan and Brian are doing, where they think people are gonna be working. It's not necessarily a decrease in salary.
No, no, it's.
You're not, you're not less people, there's not, you know, the costs overall are increasing, but they're spread out a little bit differently between the three buckets.
Yeah, no, thank you, I'm glad you, I'm glad you pointed that out because that makes a lot of sense to me because water uh and wastewater have to be separate from other projects.
Yeah, but they're trying to capture the idea that, you know, any one person could work any, work in any three of, with any one of those three buckets. On any particular day.
Great, thank you.
And we're optimizing the use of all of our staff.
Yeah.
Basically a shimmy shimmy shuffle.
Whoa.
Can I have a definition on that?
I'd like to see a demonstration itself. Anyways, um, continue on here, our long-term interest in long-term payments, uh, what, what is that for? Is that for the uh sewage plant or is it, or the uh sewage line from Sostica? Do we know? It's twenty-nine.
There, there's no debt associated with the Sostica project?
Yeah.
So that's not related to that, um. I'll be all, I'll look it up, I don't know exactly which piece of debt is associated with that.
Cause we're talking of, anyways.
It's low, it's low payments anyways.
Yeah, okay, no, you can just get back in. And, and I didn't want to bring this up because I think this is in another budget, but you mentioned pipe materials. Um, do we have any uh cement asbestos pipes in our system?
I believe there are some, but um uh predominantly you have ductile iron and actually cast iron.
Yeah.
With the ambition moving forward with the uh ten-year plan that Stefan uh kindly presented the, the other time was to um, when we're reworking uh roads, that we would be changing that, that out to uh modern uh pipe piping, which is um, which is more suited here.
Yeah.
Ductile iron, there's no flex, and so with all of the climate change and all of the variations in uh temp temperature, ductile iron and uh cast iron craft.
Yeah.
Where your PVC, you do get that little bit of flex.
Yeah.
So, and then moving forward, that cost should always be coming less and less as we change urban area.
And finally, I just want to thank you for the uh, the idea of coming up with monthly reports. Uh, I think that's super important, not just for council, but for the rate payers, so they know.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and I give them a better idea of why we have to spend money on our pipes.
Right.
You know, cause they're gonna see in the winter time how many breaks we have and how it's, well, not necessarily how expensive, but they're gonna see.
And in fact, it will capture every aspect of Public Works, inclusive of Aqua.
Good, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Counselor Dykens, uh, to you, Madam Mayor, to Brian, um, Brian, under um expenditures for contracted services, that's a significant increase and, and maybe you've already addressed it and maybe missed it, but can you give us background as to why that was significant group term actions from last year?
Contracted services, uh, I do know that there was a modest increase from Aqua. Um, I don't know, look, if you should speak to that possibly.
It's escaping me, I, I remember having the conversation.
Yes.
It is, it's, it's a, I think it's a reallocation of the article contract between different lines, but I'll find out for sure because I just can't quite, it's on the tip of my tongue, but I can't quite remember it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for the members of council? Nothing noted. And this time I think you're safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item for presentation is fire and emergency services.
And there, with the council, uh, just like to thank uh not the fire director of public services for all the work he did to this budget. Uh, this was not an easy one to put together. Uh, we did have our access to knowledge of um what William prosecuted, some of the um accounts was lacking, so we made adjustments to some of the accounts that had many surpluses over the years and we adjusted accordingly and directed those funds to the bars of twenty-three, and it's likely. So you actually just see that uh the whole, the whole budget, the bottom line, didn't change much from last year. Um, so the changes that were made uh to the individual items, again, we achieved in twenty-twenty-three, the, one of the uh larger items, uh new items, uh for the fire department was the dispatch service. Uh presently, they're using a very outdated service, uh the one that is proposed uh well, as a safety of the firefighters and provide better service to our public. Um, also in the budget is reflection of the need for stationware and also uniforms for our volunteers. This has been lacking over the years and we're now just trying to catch up for that next cycle. Some of the challenges for twenty-twenty-three, uh, is to hire and direct to emergency services, fire chief. Uh, that process is still underway. Uh, we're having significant challenges with our inspection process and the number of open orders we have and liability that is there, that is a challenge for this year. There is a challenge that you, fire chief, will have to undertake and address. Also, what is important too is the certification of our volunteers. We are in the process of getting them trained. Uh, this is a provincial um requirement. Uh, so this is something that we, again, twenty-twenty-three, uh, will be addressing. Uh, fire prevention and education is always a key consideration in all years. Um, but this goes back to the uh inspection process, it's very important. The aerial truck, uh, again, we are currently looking into uh the best approach for council to um, address this issue of a ladder truck, next slide please. And this kind of relates to the previous slide of summer initiatives. I mentioned that the implementation of new dispatch system, this is approximately forty thousand dollars per year. Uh, right now, just for the example, if one of our firefighters is in a situation and they are, of course, uh, nature of the work is very dangerous. Uh, but sometimes they also become uh conflicted with um individuals. And if they're in a conflict and they require nine-one-one, normally you, police officers press the button on the, on the radio, you know, to dispatch. Our firefighters have to use their cell phone. And this is just not safe, and also this new system will provide a number of uh really detailed records for our fire services, which will help with uh our insurance and it's a really good system we're looking at. Uh, we're also looking at revising our fire open air or permanent process. Internally right now, the process involves uh traveling back and forth to a resident's home and uh this is not cost, uh, for cost savings, so we're looking at revising that uh process. Uh, has trained to our uh firefighters when it comes down to uh building inspections, orders and so forth, that's important. Again, maintaining aerial truck, uh, right now, I'm working with uh the enterprise working group at the department. And part of that is looking at, yes, why the obvious aerial truck, also to develop a fleet equipment and management plan. So again, we're working on that right now, and we'll be able to bring that to council shortly. We also are looking at, um, we are currently going through all the operational guidelines for the department. As a number of them do need to be revised, updated, um, our, for example, our overtime uh process needs to be, we're looking at our, 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 our look at that one. Also important, like all departments, is how do we have our workplace relationships, that corporate culture and wellness. So again, that is an ongoing process, not for this department, but for other departments too. Next slide please. I believe that is it, um, I have to answer any questions, if I can answer them, I'm gonna call upon this is a card to give you a hand, so.
Counselor Owens.
When we replace old equipment, like we purchased a new truck this year, one gets taken out of service, our arrows out of service. Yeah, once, I'm assuming at one point we're gonna sell these pieces of equipment, does this money or the revenue generated through the sale of this equipment, does that go back towards a purchase of new vehicles or does it go back into a general ledger reserve type of filing?
So without direction from council, it just becomes another revenue in our budget, which means it falls down to the general surplus.
Okay.
Uh, council can certainly, you know, direct that any recoveries, you know, from equipment sales or whatever, go into a, into the, a fire reserve. It's certainly within your purview.
Any further questions? None of it. Hi. That's it. Excellent work, everybody. Uh, I will have the reading and the motion.
If this is more. Uh, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor La Chava. It resolved that council received the twenty-twenty-three budget present regents for information purposes.
All in favor? Opposed, carried unanimous. Item number seven, considerations of notice lease of motion, there are none at special meeting this evening. Item number eight, introduction, reading and considerations of bylaws, there are none this evening. Question from council to staff, item number nine, there are none this evening. Item number ten, notice of motion, but the meeting, there are none. Item number eleven, counselors reports, because it's a special meeting, there are none. Item number twelve, additional information, none has been noted. Item number thirteen, closed session, we will not be still moving this evening, there are none. Item number fourteen, matters from closed session, there are none. Item number fifteen, confirmation bylaw.
I'm clear. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. It resolved the following bylaw, the red, first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor. municipal clerk and assailant corporation gave this there too. Bylaw number twenty-three, twenty-two, being a valid confirm proceedings of council, a special meeting held in the state market.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number sixteen, we are going to adjourn. I'm clear.
Moved by Counselor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Counselor Red Owens. It resolved the special meeting of council, now adjourned at seven twenty-six.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous, good night.